We call the meeting to order. This is the meeting of August 20th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Hearing none, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the motion, the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. The next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not, would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to the non timetable agenda, or Tab 4. And the first item we have there is the financial report. And Mr. Kessel will be giving that.
Thank you, President Johnson. You should have a copy of that report in your packet this evening. Finance Director Johnson is not able to be with us. What I would ask is that we approve this report at our next commission meeting, when she's able to be back and maybe answer your questions more thoroughly. There are some details within that report that I'd certainly try to answer any questions on, but beyond that, I would ask the commission to make this a question-based report.
Okay, we will defer approval of the financial report until the next meeting. Rita, if you'd remember to carry that over on the agenda. But in between time here, are there any comments or questions regarding the financial report as printed? Not, then we will move from item A to item B. And that is the tobacco ordinance. And Mr. Coling, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, Mr. President. The proposed ordinance before you is on for second reading and final passage. This is an ordinance that makes some changes to the manner in which the city grants licenses or authority to sell for tobacco products. Under this proposed ordinance, the city would initiate a license system where any person or business who wished to sell tobacco at retail within the city would be required to get a license through the city and pay an application fee and a license fee as part of that. As well with this ordinance, we will impose a system of fines, administrative fines, for violations of the tobacco ordinance. As you know, current city code requires that someone has to be of age in order to purchase tobacco products. You cannot sell tobacco products to a minor. And if this ordinance is adopted, any business or licensee that would sell to a minor would be fined, an administrative fine, on the amount of $150 for a first offense, $250 for a second offense, and $500 for a third offense. There are also suspensions of the license to sell that would be imposed for those violations as well. The way that we have written the ordinance, the initial administrative fine would be administered by Mr. Kessel. And licensees would have the ability to appeal that fine or suspension to this body. So the U.S. City Commissioners would make the final decision on those matters. Other than that, I think that covers the basic changes that are made in this ordinance. And city staff would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any questions for Mr. Coling regarding the changes that were made? Not, we would invite anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance. If you'd like to comment, you may step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments now. There's no one from the public that would wish to comment. Any comments then by other city staff or city commissioners?
Mr. President?
Mr. Coling.
I should note that Mr. Kessel and I did meet with representatives from the Southwestern District Health Unit regarding this ordinance as well, and took their comments and concerns into account as we drafted this ordinance. And I think this ordinance meets with their approval as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. Any other comments?
I make a motion to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1478.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Brings us to item C. This involves a small business credit initiative. We need to appoint someone to the steering committee. And Mr. Kessel, you had some ideas on this?
Thank you, President Johnson. Yes, as you're aware, you appointed, or this body appointed, Gannon Baker to the loan committee at your last meeting, and it left open the steering committee appointment. I have talked to Mr. Scott Bowinger from American Bancorp. He has expressed an interest in this position. I have forwarded him some information. We've missed each other's phone calls today. But I do believe he has an interest in being appointed to this position. It would be my recommendation that we would appoint Mr. Bowinger to the steering committee and provisionally appoint myself in case he does indicate that he could not fulfill those obligations. So to sum up, I would suggest appointing Mr. Bowinger and then myself in his place if he can't do it.
You've heard Mr. Kessel's recommendation. Are there any questions, or would there be a motion regarding that recommendation? If you agree with his recommendation, the motion could just simply be to accept his recommendation.
So moved.
Is there a second? We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Brings us to item D. This is an item involving Sanford Health. And there's a resolution for consideration. And Mr. Coling is going to introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is requested by Sanford Health. Sanford Health is anticipating building a clinic in Dickinson. They're using a bond issue through South Dakota, through the South Dakota Health and Education Facilities Authority in order to borrow money for the construction of this project. And because of the specific IRS section that they are proceeding under, they need to receive approval from the city commission in order to use the bond proceeds from this bond issue to construct a facility in Dickinson. This particular resolution calls for a public hearing on this matter. Representatives from Sanford Health anticipate being here at the commission meeting on September 17th. And this resolution, if adopted by the commission, would call for that public hearing, and then you would receive more information about the project itself, and most likely an additional resolution on the 17th for this project. This would be Resolution 45 for your records. And city staff would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introductions and explanations. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Coling? Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 45-2012? Move to approve?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item E then is, would involve consideration to award liquor license. And we recently had an auction, and we'll have Mr. Kessel introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson. The city commission voted to recognize a population gain to 18,000, which meant that it made a new liquor license available. You've chosen to recognize that liquor license, and so a bid process was followed via our ordinance. And Coburn Incorporated was the highest responsible bidder for that on and off sale license. They submitted a bid of $185,000. And we've done our background and review, and we'd recommend the bid award to Coburn's Incorporated. This funding, if you award this bid, will go to the general fund.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. This action has been drawn up and presented in the form of a resolution. Mr. Coling, is it Resolution 46 then?
That's correct, Mr. President, yes.
Okay. So if you accept the city's bid process here in recommendation, city staff, the motion would be simply to approve Resolution 46. So before I ask for that motion, does anybody have any comments or questions they'd like to make or ask?
Sure. Mr. Kessel, did they have any indication for you as far as their timeframe for opening the liquor store portion? Their initial indications are that they would like to open that before 2014. We don't have a date more specific than that. We do have, in our ordinance, we recognize that they should have one year from the date of award to the date of actually starting operations. So that is a potential stumbling block. If the commission chose to recognize that, we have a similar issue with the Walmart store as we speak. Their one-year limitation is quickly drawing upon us. Now, it's not an automatic. The commission would have to take action in order to change that one-year timeframe.
I would suspect we should clarify our stance on that moving forward, too. If we've got two liquor licenses floating out there with the potential to not meet that one-year deadline, I would guess that we should, you know, state our stance on that. And I guess personally, I would say you gotta use some common sense in this environment where building anything from scratch, or even adding on to an existing business, one year's a tight timeframe in this market. And I guess I would want to see where the other commissioners stand on that, too.
I would have to agree with Coburn for sure, because they don't even have the hookups or the ground isn't even ready to be built on or started on. Have they even gotten permits? Probably not. Mr. Corton?
With respect to your question, Commissioner, no, they have not applied for it, for Coburn's. The plat on that one still hasn't been recorded. They still need to finish up with their stormwater plans for the overall development. I haven't spoken to them specifically about their project. I've spoken to other ones with them, but not specifically with them. So, you know, you're looking at normally for a grocery store probably about nine months, nine months to a year. And depending on whatever issues that may come to play, if we have a heavy winter, you know, a normal winter, I guess to say, that can delay things as well. So a year may be problematic, may be difficult for them to be able to do.
Well, I know I drove out there today, and they're just grading. So there's a lot to be done, especially on theirs. Walmart, if they're adding on another issue?
Walmart doesn't plan to add on, just as a point of clarification. They're planning to renovate existing interior space, and they have to put in an outside access door. So they're planning to take away some of the space they have for its existing use and replace it with this. So they're not adding on to the building.
Mr. Coling, I can't remember with the present ordinance, ordinance on liquor licenses, does the commission have the ability to grant an extension of time for that one year? Or is it, or do we not have that authority?
Mr. President, the way the ordinance was written and has been adopted provides that the liquor license, the additional liquor license that is granted, if it's not operated, opened and operated within one year from the time of the grant, the license reverts back to the city. So in this case, the applicant here, the bidder here, would have one year from the time of issuance in order to open and operate that business. Otherwise, that license would revert back to the city.
And all fees associated with that are retained by the city, and the application process or bidding process starts over?
That's correct. That's correct.
I think that's a little harsh in this environment, and perhaps we should amend that ordinance. That would give the commission the opportunity to extend that time.
I know the reason that we put it in there was to prevent somebody from bidding on a license, perhaps it already had one, sitting on that license and keeping the market restrained. If we issue a license, we want another business to come online and start generating taxes and revenue. I would say it's pretty clear in both of these instances, it's not that they wouldn't want to have their business open. It's not that they're sitting on the liquor license to bump up another license that they already hold. That's certainly not the case, but that's why we put that in the ordinance in the first place.
We could, if we had some authority to grant one or two extensions, maybe six-month type of extensions, or up to six months, you know, you could write it something like that, but...
I would like to see, you know, a six-month increment extension. I don't know what Walmart's problem is by not. I mean, they have a building there, and it's been a year, August 1. There's no sign of anything going on, so you're six months out. I know Walmart doesn't have a problem finding contractors to build other Walmart stores. I just don't know why they haven't done anything regarding their liquor license.
Have you received any indication, Mr. Kessel?
Commissioner Altman, yes. They've been in consistent communications with the city of Dickinson and our planning department regarding the updates on their project. I believe the last update included they want to do more in terms of their renovation. So they have been speaking to us. I can't speak to the fact of why they've waited, other than it now appears that they're going to do a bigger project than just a renovation for the opportunity to sell liquor. We can certainly draft an ordinance that allows the commission the option to grant an extension.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson. The only thing in the case of this license, you know, if we leave ourselves room to go to two years or something like that, I'd hate to see us have to wait until, you know, the week before the two years is up with not a spoonful of dirt being moved to be able to take action. You know, I think everybody makes sense that we need to give them more time to open their doors. But I'd hate to wait two years before we could issue another license.
So would you like to see a notice sent out, and then some type of due diligence on their part within that six-month timeframe? Or what would be the steps?
You know, I don't know what the answer is. I guess what I'm saying is if they're building something within a year, and we need to give them six months, or even 12, I think that'd be great. But I'd like to see some activity before a long period of time.
Because you can always see with the new liquor license that we're getting ready to issue, the timeframe's not going to be met in a year. It's more of a two-year timeframe.
Sure. And it's reasonable to give that.
And it's reasonable to give it.
Well, we'll certainly take those comments under consideration and draft an ordinance that kind of reflects some kind of a progress be shown, not just simply request an extension because you can't meet a deadline. I think that's the gist of the comment.
And I think with Mr. Coburn's, when I visited with him, his was like built to suit if they wouldn't have got the license. I mean, they were prepared to bid it up, but he said if they hadn't, then they changed the building plan, too, so...
Okay, Mrs. Spinstock, did I have a motion on Resolution 46? We just were commenting, okay. So any other comments on these issues? If not, would there be a motion regarding Resolution 46, either to approve or disapprove?
I'll move that we approve the granting of the license.
I'll second it.
We have the motion, the second. Other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to item F. This is a settlement agreement, a proposed settlement agreement. We'll have Mr. Kessel explain it.
Thank you, President Johnson. This is maybe a little confusing, so I'll try to do my best here. Back in 2007, there was a land transaction that occurred that involved city land. The buyer engaged Everett Real Estate to represent them during that transaction with the city of Dickinson. It included encumbering land that we had by providing an option to purchase that extended beyond that year. In fact, it extended, I believe, for five years. This is not the way that we sell land today, but back in 2007, this did happen. Well, the option was exercised several years later, in 2010, but the purchaser engaged a different real estate company. They engaged CRE to represent them on the option to purchase additional land from the city. The city was invoiced the realtor's fee per our policy, and we paid that to CRE. The original realtor, that being Everett, came back to the city and said, "We negotiated this deal back in 2007, so we should be entitled to some of that realtor's fees." We asked them to privately work that scenario out, and unfortunately, between the two of them, they did not come to a resolution. So what you have before you is a resolution to try and resolve that issue between realtor's fees. And what it basically does is redistributes the realtor fee. And I'm not sure, Attorney Coling, if you'd like to make any comments related to that or not.
Mr. Kessel, Everett had the agreement with the city?
Correct. Yeah, Commissioner Steiner, the original agreement was between, was brokered by Everett Real Estate for a purchaser, between them and the city of Dickinson. That included an option to buy...
Thank you.
Mr. Coling, can you explain the financial portions of this settlement?
Mr. President, Commissioners, the city's real estate policy provides that the city will pay a 6% commission on the sales of city-owned lands. That commission, in this case, came out to, I believe, right around $7,000, a little bit more. And under this settlement, Everett would repay a portion of the commission that the city, excuse me, let me state that again, CRE would repay to the city a portion of the commission that it received on the sale of this property. And the city would then pay a 4% commission to Everett Real Estate for brokering that transaction. So there would be money received from CRE as a repayment of a portion of their commission, and the city would then pay a 4% commission to Everett for the transaction.
So, but the way that works out is the city's actually going to pay more to Everett than we're receiving back from CRE?
Correct. It will result essentially in an 8% commission on this sale.
Instead of our normal six.
Correct.
But the city has some responsibility here, because we actually knew we had a commission arrangement in 2007 with one realtor, but in between time, the person buying the land, exercising the option, switched realtors. And we paid the second realtor when really this issue should have been resolved at that time between the two realtors on a split, but we didn't catch it.
Excellent summary.
So we're actually ending up paying a little more, but it resolves an issue that's been kind of plaguing the city and two of our realtors for better part of the past two years. Am I being correct?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
In the original contract, was there an expiration date that came to pass, or were we still? I believe it allowed five years' worth of options, so it would have extended out to 2012. But I'd have to reference that document specifically.
I might be wrong, but I believe the company getting the option actually paid the city a fee for that option. So we just didn't grant an option for no fee. But as Mr. Kessel said, it was 2007. This was a fairly large piece of land, so the city was anxious to have a buyer for it, even if the buyer was just taking an option out at that time. But it was a five-year option. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So we have a settlement agreement here, and I believe that's the action we would be looking for, is to either approve or disapprove the settlement agreement.
Mr. President, will we approve the settlement agreement?
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote then. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Well, I think we have a little more time here before our timetable agenda. The next item is annexation action. This is a resolution. And I have down here both Mr. Corton and Mr. Coling introducing this item. Which of you would like to go first?
I'll take first stab at it, Mr. President, and let Mr. Corton remember whatever I forget. This resolution is the final step in the annexation of a parcel of property that's currently on the north side of city limits along Highway 22. It's approximately a 2.19 acre parcel of property. Back in May, the city commission passed Resolution Number 18-2012, calling for the annexation of the property. And since that time, we've advertised for the annexation and provided notice of the annexation to the property owner, as well as to Stark County. The way the century code operates, property owners within the affected area have opportunity to file written protest to the annexation, and then to have those written protests heard by this body. We have not received any written protest to this annexation, and believe that all property owners are in favor of the annexation and have requested the annexation to city limits. So city staff would recommend adoption of this resolution and annexation of this property to city limits. This would be Resolution 47-2012.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Mr. Corton, anything you'd like to add to that?
Mr. Coling, a very good summary. I have nothing to add.
Okay. So you've heard the introduction. Any comments or questions here by city commissioners? Mr. Coling has identified it as Resolution 47-2012. Would there be a motion regarding this resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 47-2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You know, Mr. President, just one curiosity question I'd like to ask Mr. Corton. Is there any activity towards the middle of an application for building permit on this tract yet, or anything?
Commissioner Jackson, I've had some preliminary discussions with their engineer several months back when this was going through the rezoning. Since that date, I've not had any conversations. The site, my understanding, or the intention of the site is going to be a hotel site. But I have not seen anything in the last couple of months. So I would anticipate that that's probably it, but things have needed to change today.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Not, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckert.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, the motion carries. Let's push the envelope a little bit, Mr. Kessel, and see if you can get your reports in.
Okay, President Johnson, these are very quick. First, I just wanted to remind the City Commission that we'll have a budget workshop tomorrow, August 21st, and it'll be held at the library in the community room. Another reminder that the Labor Day holiday has interfered with our City Commission meeting, so the first meeting in September will actually be held on Tuesday, September 4th, rather than Monday, September 3rd, and that the joint City Commission Planning and Zoning Meeting, originally scheduled for September 27th, I'd like to suggest October 1st instead, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. October 1st is a regularly scheduled City Commission day, so a meeting just prior to that, if that works for everyone's schedule.
Works for me.
Works for me.
That's fine.
Okay. So, Rita will send out the meeting notices so they hit her calendars. Okay. What else do you have? Mr. Kessel, anything else to report on?
That would conclude my reports on the commission meeting tonight. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the city administrator? Hearing none, then, we're going to go back to Tab 3, the timetable agenda. We have one item tonight, and that involves the introduction of some new police officers and them taking the oath of office, and we'll ask Chief Dossinger to do the honors here. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. At this time, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce to the commission and the community three new officers which have recently joined our staff. You guys would like to stand up, please? The three new officers are Hunter Easterling, who's, reigns from California. He started work with us on May 30th. Evan Kowalski, who is from St. Paul, Minnesota. He started work with us on August 6th. And Ryan Bettine, who is from Coon Rapids, Minnesota, and he started work with us on August 13th. At this time, Mr. Kessel would like to come up and, is this wearing in, please?
Okay, can you raise your right hand, please, to read after me? I state your name.
I, Hunter Easterling.
Will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
Will support, obey, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The state of North Dakota.
The state of North Dakota.
And the city of Dickinson.
And the city of Dickinson.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
In that I will strive always.
And that I will strive always.
To meet the highest ethical standards.
To meet the highest ethical standards.
Implicit in my employment.
Implicit in my employment.
And in furtherance of the best public interest.
And in furtherance of the best public interest.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Welcome.
Good luck to hear a little bit about you. Thank you, sir. Good evening. My name's Hunter James Easterling. Like Chief said, I've been here with the department since May 30th. I've been loving every day since. It's been exciting. Exciting times in Dickinson, North Dakota. I'm actually originally from a little island off the coast of Washington State, so, another small town, and then I did move to California, and that's where I went through the academy and got my education. And I heard about the oil boom, and I figured they needed some help in law enforcement. That's what ultimately brought me out here. It's exciting, and thank you for having me, and, thank you.
Well, you're right, we do need, we do need help. Do you have any family members here tonight with you?
Actually, yes, I brought my stepdad, Todd Reynolds. He's filming, taking pictures.
Okay, well, great. And were you able to find a place to live okay?
Yes. It was quite the process, but I found a place. Stayed in a hotel a couple nights, but then met a very nice lady online, and she had a room available, and so I got into one, and so, but yeah, it was quite the challenge.
All right.
It's unexpected to have housing be like the main problem here.
Yeah. Well, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Evan William Kowalski. Went to high school in Somerset, Wisconsin, is where I'm from. Moved to St. Paul and went through my schooling in Minnesota. Did some training at Alexandria Technical College for a skills program. Main interests, came up, had a guy come up to our school in Alexandria and talk to us about needing some help in Dickinson, where's the police department, and sparked my interest, and came out here, and process went great. Everyone was really nice through the process, and went smoothly. Who I have here tonight, I have Autumn, my girlfriend. She's from St. Paul, Minnesota, my family members. Fortunately, unable to make it tonight. My dad's a police officer in St. Paul, so, come from a family of law enforcement. I'm happy to be here in Dickinson.
So, where, which city is more exciting right now, Dickinson or St. Paul?
Pretty questionable. You know, Dickinson is, like I said, oil boom going on and the things that are going on here, pretty comparable. But, the people here, been great so far, so.
Good, and you found a place to live too, okay?
Yep. I fell into a place hot. I usually say I have the Kowalski curse, but worked out really well. I found a place, a great apartment, right off Third Ave, so.
Are you a football fan?
I am.
And you were born in Wisconsin?
Acker fan.
Lebanon, Minnesota. Okay, well, that was my question.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm curious. You said you had somebody come to Alexandria and spoke to you guys about Dickinson. Who was that?
Officer Corey Lee.
Okay.
He, I don't know if he's a recruiting officer, or, and yeah, he came up and just grabbed some, some guys going through the training and said, you know, we'd like to have some good candidates, so fill out some applications and come on down for an interview.
That's great.
So, yeah, worked out really well.
Good.
I'm glad you brought your family with, because usually those are the ones that stay when they bring their families.
Yeah.
Did Officer Lee bring his canine with him?
No, he didn't. He didn't. No.
Now, I'm sure you've told your father, since he's a police officer, that we continue to have openings.
Yeah.
If he'd like to.
Exactly. I think he's comfortable where he's at, but yes, I'll pass the word along. Thank you.
Okay. Well, welcome.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ryan Thomas Bettine. I graduated high school from Jackson High School in Minnesota. After high school, I enlisted in the United States Navy. I was in that for about four and a half, four years, seven months. After that, I moved up to cities, at that time with my fiancee Jenna. Moved up to cities to go to school, and I also went to Alexandria, with Ebony. And also, had your guys' recruiter come up to the school and sparked my interest as well, so, kind of sat and listened to what he had to say, and ended up taking a test that night, and a couple weeks later, came out here for an interview, and everything went well, and all the officers I talked to during the interview process were nice, and everybody seems nice out here, and, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve here.
And how long have you been on duty now?
August 13th.
Are you a Viking fan?
Sort of, sort of. My main team's Philadelphia, though.
That's not one of the conditions.
I was going to say, you are like, I'm not ready yet, but. I would guess that you're a Seahawk fan, if you're a football fan, huh?
Yeah, I haven't had a best of luck with football.
No, well, we haven't either. We're Viking fans. Okay. All right, well, and housing, you settled in someplace?
Yeah, we got settled into a FEMA trailer, so.
A FEMA trailer, yeah, well, that's true. That's nice, huh?
It's not too bad, a little small, but it's levelable, it's not too bad.
Mr. Kessel, is that one of the FEMA trailers we brought in from mine at then?
Yeah, we have six, and I think three are, two or three are occupied now.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, bear with us, we're building lots of housing, so hopefully in a year or so, it'll be a different situation, so. Well, anything else, Chief Dossinger?
Well, at least none of them aren't from Chicago. We don't need any more Bears fans on our team.
Well, if you get some applicants from Chicago, I think you better talk to them though, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome, you guys.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, we'll go down to public safety and hear from the fire department, Chief Seabuck. Well, Chief, you're pretty much emptying out the room, you know, we introduce you and everybody gets up and leaves.
I noticed that, and I also had to fight my way through a sea of blue to get up here. I don't know if you noticed that or not. Well, that's good, I'm glad to see that the police department is able to fill their ranks, and obviously with some very qualified people. I look forward to meeting them personally and to working with them. Tonight, I present the July monthly report for the Dickinson Fire Department. Our incident responses in July, we had 35 calls for service compared to 34 in 2011. It doesn't look like we gained much there, it looks like we're almost leveling out and plateauing. That compares to 22 in 2010, but the rest of the story, however, looks like this. Year-to-date, January 1 through July 31 of 2012, we're 42% ahead of 2011 in calls for service, 85% ahead of 2010 in calls for service. We are busy. Our prevention and public education, the month of July, we completed 109 inspections in the various categories of routine, follow-up, construction, childcare miscellaneous, and had time for two tours and lectures at the same time. July activities, our department was involved with the Rough Rider Days Parade, where one of our lead trucks carried members of the cancer, the area cancer group, the Wanna Cure Team, they're called, and we're very proud to partner with them in those activities, and we hope to continue to do that every year that they would like us to be their ride in the parade. We intend to accomplish that for them. Family Fun Day, June 30th, at the J.C. Park, we had our staff and fire trucks at that also. It's a best friend, put on by the Best Friends Mentoring Program. And in July, we completed a couple of zones of hydrant testing. We don't do the whole town at once, as you've heard me say before, we simply can't accomplish that, but we did test over 200 hydrants, that's fire department staff and water utilities personnel worked together on that.
How many hydrants do we have in the community?
I want to say about 1,200. I'd have to defer that to Mr. Soren. I think that's close. Is it?
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but 1,200 plus is, is pretty close to the number.
Yeah, okay. It seems sometimes that we're adding 200 monthly. I know it's not that bad. Training, we had a regional fire school that we hosted in Dickinson with Burlington Northern Railroad, it's called the Trans Car Training. It was on July 7th, it was open to area fire departments and emergency responders, as well as the local ag community, and the training was on anhydrous ammonia response in rail cars and in over-the-road transports. That was a success. We were the first location in the state, and then that railroad car moved across the state with its training, and very well-received across the entire state. It was also the first time that particular training car was ever in the state of North Dakota. Special operations training was high-angle rescue, rope work, and lowering a person down in a stretcher or in a litter from elevated height. Regular training was auto extrication with some of our new rescue tools, our heavy rescue tools. There's some pictures of our crews working on some cars that evening. That's a new area that we're venturing into, we recognize the need for the community, and we recognize the necessity of our department being trained in that. We have about 80% of our members certified in auto extrication right now, and we intend to have another class to get even more, more of our members certified. That concludes the monthly report. I have just one more report, and if you have any questions on the monthly report, I'll take that first, I guess. Also, as included in your packet then is a grant application for an energy infrastructure grant to purchase a quick attack pumper. I think there was, there were some technical difficulties in you having the letter in front of you, I'm not sure if you've got that, but we have a letter of request before you to proceed with the grant application to purchase a quick attack pumper. This would be a pickup-based sized unit, it would supplement our staff, it would be replacing as a frontline piece of equipment, a 1981 mini pumper. The truck would be four-wheel drive, four-door cab to haul four firefighters. It would have features that would enhance its ability to fight a grass fire. We have the potential for a large grass fire within city limits, within the large open areas that some of the annexations are bringing in, and it would also be designed in such a way that it would be usable on vehicle fires and structure fires also. As the community continues to grow, and as we recognize the substations that are needed and that will be built, we also recognize that it's going to be a situation where we'll be adding to our fleet of equipment, not just replacing vehicles. This gives us an opportunity through state funding to help us accomplish that. The purpose of the request tonight is for your permission to go ahead with the application.
Thank you, Chief. You've heard his introduction and his request. Are there any comments or questions before we ask for a motion? Would there be a motion? I think what he's asking for is a motion of approval to proceed with the grant application.
So moved.
Second?
We have the second and the motion, so any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Dukert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Good luck, good luck with the application.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from the police department and Chief Dossinger.
Good evening again. I have before you the July monthly report for the Dickinson Police Department for 2012. As you can see, traffic accidents were, remain constant. We had a total of 96 traffic accidents in the city in the month of July, 75 of them are property-related, four injury-related accidents, and 17 hit-and-run accidents. There were a total of 793 traffic stops conducted for the month, 401 citations were issued, 237 warnings were issued, and a total of 45 parking tickets were issued. Calls for service for the month, we were at 2,330 calls for service, increase of 101 calls for service for the same month last year. To date, to the end of July, we're at 15,240 calls for service compared to 12,853 last year for the same timeframe. So, an increase of a little over 2,300 calls for service. Just kind of a snapshot of some of the calls that we're responding to and incidents, as you can see DUI numbers are, continue to rise in town with DUI arrests, assault calls, simple assault and aggravated assault calls, arrests have risen. This is for the month of July, not for the total year, and surprisingly, the number of disorderly conduct calls relating to urinating in public was way up there for the month Fireworks in July, responded to 92 calls compared to 85 in 2011 and 44 in 2010. Some news, this month, August 27th and August 28th, Monday and Tuesdays, the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, we are competing against the fire department. Starts at 7:00 p.m. Monday, August 27th, and Tuesday, August 28th, from 12 till 7:00 is when it wraps up. That time, a little Dickinson Police Department, a little tech's car will be given away that's marked as a police squad car. Vote for police this time, please. A little bit of a dry spell. And we're also hosting a family barbecue picnic funded by the Dickinson Pizza Association for its employees that give us an opportunity to meet a lot of the newer employees we have within our department, their families, and spouses, and girlfriends, a chance for us to get to know each other again. Are there any questions?
Chief, I'm not much into criminal activity, but what, what's the line between simple assault and aggravated assault?
Aggravated assault is substantial bodily injury. A simple assault, it doesn't have to be a substantial bodily injury.
Thank you.
Well, it's a disgusting topic, but urinating in public, I mean, is that by bars or is it because people are living in their vehicles or?
A lot of time, that's attributed to, you know, it's simply maybe urinating in a bar parking lot. As far as contributing to people living on their vehicles, I don't see a direct correlation with that. We'd have to pull up some police reports to see that, but usually it's associated with, with Rough Rider Days, which was held in July, a lot of alcohol consumption and larger crowds.
Not enough porta-potties?
Or people that don't have patience to wait, so.
Does it affect?
Are these ones that the police officers are seeing, or is this reported?
These are witnessed by a police officer.
Any other comments or questions?
Chief Dossinger, you know, it's apparent the numbers are still growing, but do you get any sense that the rate of growth might be leveling it off at all, or not so? Is the rate of growth in these various infractions increasing at the same pace it was six months ago, twelve months ago?
I don't believe so. We have, it has leveled off to a certain degree. We have seen an increase in the bar fights, bar assaults, you know, both simple and aggravated assaults, potentially, you know, after post-bar hours, bar closing time fights in the parking lots. That seems to have increased again, but in a general, it has slowed down.
Okay, thank you.
With the addition of the three officers that were sworn in tonight, are you full now, or you, or do you still have some vacancies in the department?
We still have some vacancies in the department. Right now, we have, today, a matter of fact, we have gone through the interview process. We were allocated two additional officers to hire in September for the budget cycle, and we still have two officers to fill current vacancies.
So that'd be a total of four yet that you need to fill?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I also have one other report to, to give you. As with Chief Seavock at the Fire Department, the Police Department is applying for a grant through the Energy Impact Office. We are seeking approval to apply for a Lenco Bearcat. What that is, is a tactical team vehicle. It is an armored wheeled vehicle. It gives us an opportunity to transport our team and our equipment and to provide a rescue vehicle in the high incident situations that we do respond to, and there should be a letter in your packet describing that.
Okay, I'm sure what the chief then is ask, excuse me, is asking for is approval from the commission to apply for the impact funds before we ask for a motion. Do you have any comments or questions regarding this piece of equipment?
I have a general question maybe for Mr. Kessel, but with this grant application and the previous one, do we prioritize these when we send them in, or do we simply let the chips fall where they may?
In the case of these, this specific application, the two that are before you, we've not prioritized them. When we make oil impact grant applications in the past, we've been allocated dollars based on a, a percentage that was negotiated during the process, during the legislative process. So we've been, we've had the luxury of choosing which projects we'd like to see funded, but in this case, they're simply applied for, and we haven't put a priority on either of them.
So there's no value in prioritizing these? I don't know which the priority would be, but if there is one that we think is far more important, there's no value in prioritizing?
I had a conversation with the, with Jerry Fisher from the Office of Oil Impact Office, and mentioned that we were likely to apply. He did not indicate that a prioritization would be helpful to that office, so we've chosen not to prioritize. Now, we certainly can. I'm not sure how you'd select which one is a higher priority.
That'd probably be your job.
Whoever wins Battle of the Badges, each have a quarter of a million dollars on the line.
I will say, and they're both very valid requests, Chief Dossinger, you've had a couple different incidences where a unit of this size or of this type would have been very helpful to have, if I'm not mistaken. Some barricade incidences, maybe you can share what you can with the commission?
That's correct. Currently, we do not have access to a, basically, an armored tactical team vehicle. Currently, the vehicle we use for transporting our team and our equipment is a vehicle that we got through the DRMO leftover military surplus vehicle years ago. It is not armored, and it is, it is outdated and not the most reliable vehicle anymore. We, as I had reported in the last commission meeting, we have been responding to the outside line counties on a regular basis when they do call for assistance, and most of these calls are, are high-risk, either a hostage situation, a barricaded subject call, and unfortunately, it does result in a lot of times where there are, have been shots fired. And this is a vehicle that would allow us to not only provide protection to our team and our equipment, but also provide protection to the citizens if we do have a downed citizen in a rescue situation, which would be utilized. Currently, our team is the only team in-state, a major team, that does not have a vehicle like this. Bismarck, Minot, Grand Forks, and Fargo. I'll have a Lenco Bearcat that they utilize in their tactics.
Commissioner Jackson, I, having heard that, of course, Chief Seavock's vehicle, we know we're going to have at least one fire substation online next year with the completion of the Public Works Building, and we may have a second, depending upon how well Sundance, that annexation and that, that growth happens. So we could have the potential for two substations coming online, and we'll have to man and equip those vehicles. So I'm not sure how we would choose a prioritization.
You know, I, I don't doubt that they're both very important, but perhaps alternative funding is a little bit more readily available for one than the other, which might suggest a priority. And if not, that's fine. Just wanted to ask the question.
Thank you for the suggestion. When we make application, we'll, we'll have that discussion internally before they're actually applied for.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Would there be a motion regarding his request, either to approve it or deny it?
I'll make a motion to approve it for the application for the Bearcat.
Second?
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Chief Dossinger, I have one question for you. On Fifteenth Street, what more can we do to train the public? They have to do the detour and not drive around where the workers are. I don't know, maybe they're done with the project. I haven't been there today, but cars were actually avoiding the detour, going to the South Street and going around on the one, one-way?
That's out there already.
Is that gone? If we have any more projects like that, I mean, it's very dangerous. I don't know what else you could do.
I think they tried to do the best job they could with the flag people, the flag people are out there, but that's, you know, that's a congested area. Maybe as engineer staff, we could sit down with the company and the Police Department in there, and their flag people to see what we could do to, to increase the safety in that area.
It's like they can't read, you know? They just ignore it and just go around.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessel, are you going to be okay?
Thank you. I think so.
All right, let's go to Tab Six. We've got some rezoning petitions, and Mr. Catan, can you take us through those?
Yes, Mr. President. Commissioners, we have three rezoned petitions. These are the second readings. We heard them last month or last meeting. The first one's a Snyder rezon. This is a rezon petition from Ag to Light Industrial for property situated to the east of Highway twenty-two and on, and to the south of Thirty-second Street Southwest. It's located in the northern extraterritorial zone of the city. There are no changes from the first reading, and city staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Catan. This is the second reading of fourteen-eighty-one. If there's anybody from the public that would like to comment, you may do so now. Step to the podium, state your name. We'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? No one from the public? Any comments or questions by city commissioners?
Mr. President, will we approve second reading of fourteen-eighty-one?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next item, Mr. President, is the Casa Leche rezon. This is a rezon petition from General Commercial to High Density Residential for a property at twenty-six Fifth Avenue East. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. There is no change from the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Catan. This is the second reading of fourteen-eighty-two. If there's anybody from the public that would like to comment, you may do so now. Step to the podium, state your name. We'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Any comments or questions by city commissioners? Not? Would there be a motion regarding the second reading?
So move.
I'll second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
The next rezoned petition is from a single-family residential to medium-density residential for property situated to the east of Country Oaks Drive and to the south of Twenty-Fifth Street West. Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. There is no change from the first reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Catan. This is the second reading of fourteen-eighty-three. Anybody from the public that would like to comment, may do so now. Step to the podium, state your name. We'll hear your comments. No one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments, questions by city commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen-eighty-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Catan. Do you have anything else that you'd like to comment on?
Mr. President, if you want me to talk about the reports, I could do that, or we can move on to Item B. It's your call.
Oh, we'll go to Item B, and then we'll catch you after that. So Item B is a clay sidewall bid award at the landfill, and Mr. Soren will tell us about that.
Thank you, President Johnson, and city commissioners. We did open bids for a clay sidewall project out at the landfill. This, this project's needed to put the barrier between our, our municipal waste and the, the natural ground that's out there. It is a requirement for us to, to put that barrier in. Originally, we had a, a little bit smaller project on this side planned with a leach aid pond project on the, the north side that we were going to do. As part of the, the master plan, it's been determined that in the next two to three years, we're going to need to do another cell development on the, on the north side of our landfill, and because of that, we didn't want to invest the money into the, the leach aid pond improvements at this point. So this project got a little bit bigger, was originally budgeted, I believe, at seventy thousand. The leach aid pond was budgeted at a hundred thousand, so we had a total of a hundred and seventy thousand budgeted between those two projects. We're asking for this one to be approved at a hundred and sixty-two thousand, which will take care of the south side, allow us to expand our landfill just a little bit that direction and protect the soils to the south. So it is, we do have the funds budgeted. It was for two projects. We've turned them into just this one, though.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Soren's introduction. Any questions or comments for him? I think the motion then would be to accept the Martin Construction bid for, and, and make an award for a hundred and sixty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars?
That's correct.
Correct. Anybody care to move that motion?
I'll move.
Second?
We have the motion and the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckard?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Soren, anything else you'd like to report on or comment?
If I, if I could, President Johnson, last Friday, we did have a, a pre-construction meeting on the wastewater treatment facility. They have started moving some of the topsoil around out there and are, are planning to bring office trailers and stuff on site this week, and are, are starting that project moving forward to try and keep us on, on schedule. So there is activity started, and we look forward to keeping that project going.
Great. Maybe about every other meeting or so, you can give us a little update on, on how that's, how they're doing?
Sure. We will. They're hoping to get some buildings up this year, so they're getting some winter work started. So they're, they're hitting it pretty aggressively up front here to try and, and make sure they've got work they can do throughout the winter.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Soren? All right. Well, then, Mr. Catan, you wanted to comment on the code enforcement report for June and July.
Yes, Mr. President. The June one I provided for you, I believe I briefly spoke about that. I didn't have the report in front of me to distribute in a prior meeting, and for brevity, I'll just go to the July report. I think that's more, more pertinent at this point. If you look at the July report, you can see that we are definitely increasing our permits. We are at a record pace, you know, just highlighting some areas that we do have under new building permits. Single-family structures, to date, we're at three-hundred-and-sixty-three compared to the total, and this is the total for last year, at one-thirty-seven. The total permits that we have are four-hundred-and-thirty-nine compared to, and that is as of the end of July, compared to two-hundred-and-fifty-five that we had at the end of December, or end of December of last year. So we are significantly ahead of last year. Building permit values, we are at a hundred and fifty million compared to a hundred and twenty-three million from this time last year. Last year's totals were the end-of-the-year totals. I think the real question, the real indication of where we're at is the last page of that, where we add in the multifamily housing. When you add in those totals, we're at seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven permits or dwelling units for the year. Last year's total, at the end of the year, was four-hundred-and-forty-nine. That adds up to be a hundred and sixty percent over, over last year's total, and we are roughly halfway through the year. In the morning, I kind of added up some permits that I feel that will be coming our way within the next month or so. They've submitted their applications. They're working on either correcting grading plans or some minor issues with respect to their permits, and just threw some totals together just to see how that would be. When I did, I, I was pretty, pretty shocked at the results. I feel that within the next month or two, we could have another eight-hundred permits come our way. Those are all multifamily dwelling units that are already in the process and very close to be issued. So if you add those totals, we're at sixteen-hundred, which would be four times the total that we did last year, and last year was our record year. And then I started looking at the August through October, and we haven't even got August through October's total. That's still through our development season, and it's very conceivable that we can get another four-hundred permits when you stretch it across the board with single-family and multifamily. So, you know, being very conservative, and it's not inconceivable, we can be a five-hundred percent total from last year with one less staff member.
Well, very good. Just think what you could have done with two less staff members, huh? No? Oh, that isn't the point you were trying to make?
That was not the point I was trying to make, but I appreciate that.
Okay, well...
We are definitely having a robust year. I'm not seeing things going down. What we are having, I think for the public to be aware of, is we are definitely having a disproportionate factor of multifamily being pushed forward because that is where the need is the most, and so projects are pushing, instead of single-family, they're pushing their multifamily forward. That's a good thing, because hopefully, in the next couple of years, through the build-out of that, we could significantly reduce the, the cost of apartments and then also the demand with respect to that. But things are not slowing down one iota.
Well, there's, there's no question, we're doing something here on the supply side. Mrs. Stuckard, you're in the real estate business. What, what is, what are you guys seeing presently on the demand side? Is there still pretty good demand, or?
Well, the, the, anything under three-hundred thousand, you know, is sold pretty quickly, but all the new construction is pretty much over the three-hundred-thousand-dollar price range. That has slowed a little bit, but it always is this time of the year, because when people are getting ready to start school, have their children, you know, and they're moving around, but it will pick up again. Some are saying it's election year, which I don't think that has ever affected us. It's basically... It's basically, this time of the year, we've noticed some slowdown in the above the 300 range.
But, uh, how about like, uh, you probably wouldn't know about apartments, but as we're opening up, I'm sure we're opening up some new apartments almost weekly, uh, do those seem to be filling up right away?
Absolutely. I mean, we have calls every single day and we're referring them out to people that are handling rentals. So, we're still, we still have a rental shortage here.
Okay.
And it isn't the housing shortage so much, it's the qualification of the housing.
Okay. Anybody else have comments or questions?
You know, um, for Ed, do you, um, are we getting to the time of year that these 52 single-family, for instance? Will some of those maybe not happen till after the first of the year? Or do you think these 363 will all get in the ground?
Uh, I'm not sure what the backlog is, you know, for doing the foundation work and the concrete and the rest. I don't think that's a significant backlog for that. I mean, a lot of people put a ton of permits in due to our mild winter. We had our significant figures in March and April and May, you know, for the entire season. So, you know, I, I don't see that all of those obviously are not gonna be built, no, uh, 'cause there's gonna be a backlog with that. But a significant number can go in. Our review times for single-family, if you've got it all together and the rest, we're still at about a week or so for that. Multifamily, we're, we're a little bit longer for that. We are scrutinizing and looking through the permits more now that we have more staff to keep their eyes on it with respect to grading plans and, uh, and the other issues, other development ones. So, that has slowed things up a little bit, but it's a good thing, because we're, you know, we're, we're keeping an eye on it with respect to that. And, um, so, I, I think that, uh, I think we'll be able to keep pace with that, but not all of them are gonna be built this year, no.
Mr. May, I have a question for, it can be Ed or Sean, Sean, whoever. The comments of us that I get from accessibility, I know everybody's really, really busy, but do we have one main person that's in the office here all the time that they could talk to regarding building permits, or? We're having a problem as realtors selling dirt, and then we don't know, um, they make a contingent on due diligence, which isn't really fair to the seller if it's more than 30 days or 60 days, but yet when they, if they buy the property without it, then we don't approve it once it gets down here, um, because they still have to go through different procedures. How could we make it easier for the, the realtors to work with the city or the city to work with us so that when the buyer is buying something, that they don't have to go through all these hoops and take six months to a year? If we, if we knew more upfront, maybe we could help you all, too.
With respect to your question, Commissioner Stookert, uh, you know, what we're finding out is, everybody is under, under a ton of stress, you know, there's so much going on. The problem that you're talking about is one of, you know, as staffing, uh, we try to accommodate as best we have, best we can. I have started limiting our hours with our building inspectors, and it's the only way for us to do our job. We are available Tuesday through Thursday, uh, eight to 11 o'clock, uh, in order to allow the remaining of time for inspectors to be out in the field to do the inspections that are necessary and also do the plan reviews. That being said, the problems that we're running into are incomplete applications, and that's become very rampant. Everybody is so busy, from the architects and engineers to the surveyors to, to the contractors, and unfortunately, uh, they're not providing the detailed information that we need. So we are, we are now saying the applications are incomplete and not moving forward, and we don't have the time to chase them around, in essence, uh, you know, to do the callbacks that we would have because of the permit totals that you see. So it's, it's not a one issue, uh, it's, it's, it's across the board. With staff time, we're trying to, you know, trying to maximize our time as best we can. We're not as available to the public as we've been in the past, uh, just due to the amount of volume and trying to be, uh, trying to figure out what's the best way to use our time. That being said, it also comes back to the property owners and contractors and developers to provide complete information to us as well, and unfortunately, that's not there. So it's a, it's across the board, it's not one issue that, uh, that you could pin on. To answer your question, uh, if we could hire, uh, that would provide, I have one open spot available right now for a code enforcement officer. We went through the whole application process, didn't get a single application for it. So it's, you know, it's this lack of staff, uh, with the incredible demand that we have, and that's true across the board for all of our departments. And unfortunately, we cannot be available to the public as much as we would like to just due to the demands that we do have in our job. So I, I wish I had a better answer to that, it's just across the board, uh, with respect to that. I try to make myself available, I know as Sean does as well, our inspectors do, but there gets to be a point in which if you make yourself so available to the public, you can't do the reviews that you need to, and you've gotta figure out what makes, what you can do and prioritize your time. So, we're trying to do the best that we can, and, but when you factor in a 400 percent increase from last year, and last year was a record year, something's gonna give, and that's the unfortunate reality of the situation.
So if the buyer hired their own engineer to do a little research ahead of time, would that help?
That would help out, um, you know, we're having more and more engineering companies coming in here and contractors as well, but, uh, you know, we're, they're inundated as well. But yes, the, I think instead of relying upon a future buyer of coming to the city and, and having the time and sitting down with staff like we've had in the past, I think they're gonna have to do more on their end where they hire an engineering company and architect and require them to do the work that they need to do, have it complete, so by the time that we get it, we could quickly look through and issue the permit instead of going through two or three or four reviews in order to issue those permits.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Stookert, if I may, uh, just two additional comments. I think, uh, we've also gone down the road of trying to hire a private contractor to help with plan reviews and, uh, maybe bringing forth to this body at the joint powers agreement to have the City of Grand Forks assist us with the plan reviews as well. So we are trying to get the, um, our current staff out in the field to do exactly as Planner Curtan has mentioned. The other thing I'd like to mention is, I, Planner Curtan, I believe, Engineer Soren has also addressed the Board of Realtors in the past about our process. And if that, if you've had as much turnover as other businesses have...
We have.
It may be an opportunity for us to address you en masse at, at one of those meetings if, uh, if you'd make an invitation. I'm sure we could create, uh, a presentation that may help discuss this process.
Okay, you're on.
Uh, it's Planner Curtan, C-O-U-R-T-O-N.
I looked right at him, so he knew.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, are there any, uh, reports by city commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, you can come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Good evening, President Johnson and commissioners. I have an issue to, to ask about. My name is Keith Anton and I live in Dickinson. Uh, I was wondering if there was any feet limit that the smokers have to stay away from the entrance of the buildings. The reason why that I asked is that sometimes they're just, uh, on the other side of the building or, I mean, right outside the door, 10 feet away, and, um, and I do know that the police department are very busy, but I was just concerned about the situation, and, uh, thank you very much for letting me, uh, speak to you on this subject, and that's about all I have to say.
Okay.
Is there, is there a feet limit that they're supposed to be, or, or not?
Mr. President, we'll have to research that issue. Nothing comes to mind. I don't believe that we have one, but, uh, we can do some research on that and get back to you.
Did, uh, Chief Dossinger get called away? Did he leave?
No.
No, he's here.
Uh, Chief, do you know the answer to that question?
I thought it was 100 feet.
I believe at one time, they tried to pass 25 feet, but it didn't go through for the 25 feet. I, I can't remember what the issue was, but it included within 25 feet, and that part was thrown out, so I don't think there is a, a limit on how far away.
Uh, thank you very much.
If you leave your telephone number with the clerk, we'll have, uh, one of these gentlemen give you a call when they get the answer. How would that be?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I do have one issue I'd like to bring up for the next meeting. Uh, I'm getting calls, uh, with concerns about, uh, and maybe we can get Mr. Prowse here to, to advise us, uh, about refugees pick up, a lot of people are getting the tags now, uh, some of them for, uh, too long of wood in their garbage can, uh, the grass bags next to their can when the can isn't full and that type of, I'm, I'm getting those type of complaints, so, um, I know there's been charges out at the Baylor Building, you know, now and so on, so people are, are seeing that stuff and they got questions, why now, and why their grass clippings are left and so on, so maybe if we can get Mr. Prowse here to just update the public on, on what's going on.
Or, Mr. Soren, maybe you'd like to, uh, at, at our next meeting, comment about that if you could.
Yes, we certainly can.
I'm sure you're getting those calls also.
Well, I would, you know, I would like to address, I guess, a couple of them right now, but we'll, we'll do something more at the next meeting, particularly the grass clippings, um, you know, obviously one of the issues we have with them is the number of bags that are out there, and we're finding a large number of them next to cans that aren't full, um, which creates additional staff time that has to go out and pick those up. So we, we've implemented the program to try and encourage people to fill up their cans so we can use the side-load garbage to pick that up and not create additional work for the staff that is, is limited already with the, the growth of the community. And, uh, you know, we're starting to see that benefit us quite a bit in, in reducing that. Actually trying to encourage people if they need two cans, we do offer a second can at approximately 50 percent of the first can price, um, just to try and help us with our staffing issues that we have going right now. So, I, I think a lot of people feel if they put the bags next to it, it's, gets recycled, and that's not really the case. We have a rear-load truck that runs around town and has to stop and pick up all of those, along with cardboard and anything else, furniture that's left on the side of the road. We're trying to shrink that route and try and get it more, um, it's more effective for us if we can keep it in the, the side-load and keep that truck moving forward that way. Because the grass clippings get mixed in with it, we're, we're unable to recycle them that way when they're bagged. Thank you.
See, in the past, we were told we couldn't put the grass clippings in the garbage tin. That's where it's coming from.
Yeah, I guess I have fallen into the same thing. I set the grass clippings beside our can, it wasn't full, I got the notice, and I thought, well, it took more time to put the notice on than it did to throw the bag in and, and take it away. But I think it's a public awareness issue of where we need to go with it.
So it is okay to put the grass clippings in the container now?
Yeah, we certainly would encourage people to go and recycle them at our recycle sites. Um, that's certainly the best, but when they bag them, um, it makes it very difficult for them to be recycled, so they can put them in the, the container if there's room, certainly, and, uh, it makes, uh, life easier for all of us and our staff, um, to pick that up.
I think, I think the issue that, the larger issue here that we really wanna try avoid is, between the increased workload, worker shortages, you know, I know there's always discussion internally with, you know, with your own group about maybe coming to the commission and, and requesting that, uh, we don't allow any of that piling beside the, um, the containers and that everything's gotta go in the containers. And, you know, I would hope we could avoid doing that. I think it's, it's a great service that the city staff does when we still allow that rear-load, uh, machine, uh, piece of equipment to operate. That's a, a great convenience to our citizens, but if we don't fully utilize the containers, we run the risk of losing this other service just because of the workload and the worker shortages. So I guess if it, is, is it fair to say then, a, a general rule of thumb is if you can fill up the container, do that first?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, I, I think if you can make kind of more of a presentation on this, that'd be great. Mr. Jackson?
If I could add one thing, and I, and I agree with all these points, but it just seems to me, when it comes to grass clippings, we don't talk enough about encouraging people to buy mulching blades for their mowers, for, what, $8 or $10 or whatever a, a blade costs. People can do so much good keeping their taxes at bay and keeping the garbage fees at bay and do so much for the environment by putting that mulching blade on their mower, and then we don't have any bags on the curb and we don't have any grass clippings in the, in the, uh, the cans.
That's a great point. So, Commissioner Steiner, when they call you...
I want to get a mulching blade.
I have one more thing, too, of, um, the, the new businesses that are coming here into Dickinson are the ones that ask me why we don't charge a business license fee, because that would give them, um, they, they could go online to see who all the businesses are in Dickinson, um, rather than just the chamber members. And I said, in the past, we've never had a business license fee, but that would be something, you know, that maybe the commission needs to talk about, too.
Mr. Castle?
Commissioner Stookert, um, I'm, I don't recall when, uh, since you sat on the commission before, and then there was a slight gap there. We did present a similar idea to the commission on, on business licenses. I think as a staff, there's, we see a lot of positives with that. On the, on the other side of that coin, of course, it does take more time to, to issue those licenses and such, but, uh, we can certainly bring that project back up, but the commission did vote, turned it down the, uh, the idea or the thought process. So if, if you'd like us to research that again and bring it back to the table, we certainly will.
That probably was before we have all these new businesses coming here. I think it would be really nice to track them, 'cause it, when they call me and say, "Do you know of this business?", and I'm saying, "No, I don't." See, they expect the commission to know everything, but we don't.
Why should, um, an existing business have to pay a fee so you can track who's here and make it, you know, it, we, we pay so many fees already, why another fee?
Well, I guess, I don't know. They've been, they asked me why we don't have one, 'cause they've never been in a city where they didn't have to have a business license, so, um, I think their question was, is, if, is this business really legit? I wanted to go online and check it out. Do we really know that?
Well, just because if we issue them a license doesn't mean they're legit, legit, and the city doesn't monitor that and try to determine, you know, if they're doing things, you know, the right way. It's, it's the same way when the state issues a contractor's license, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're a reputable contractor.
I would, I would have to hear some really good reasons to do it, you know, it's not just the dollars, but making each business owner complete an application, staff time to review applications and monitor this, and I, maybe there are good reasons that I'm not thinking of, but I'd have to hear them.
Do we know how many businesses there are in Dickinson?
Probably not.
That'd be one of the good reasons.
So what, what, what does that piece of information tell you? I can tell you, like, our business, we have to fill out so many forms from so many different states and from the federal government, and, um, you know, it's, it isn't helping you create wealth and do what your business is supposed to do. And so I'd, I'd be very hesitant to support, you know, another license just so somebody else can know how many their businesses there are or which ones there are, and... We have more than 10. Less than a million.
Well, we have...
Does that help? Probably not.
Mr. President, if I could just respond to Commissioner Jackson's, uh, comment, I, you know, I, everywhere I've been, we've had the business license, and that's neither here or there, but the reason for that is to deal with the zoning issues. When you have multiple tenants to come in and out, uh, they don't rarely check, you know, with the city to see if that's a permitted use or what they need to do. And then you also have the fire issue as well, if you have a change of, uh, occupancy and the rest, they may need to upgrade their, uh, with respect to fire and also building codes. And if you go from a basic tenant to a more intensive use, then that would require additional parking spaces, and to be frank with you...
And to be frank with you, we are creating nonconformities left and right in the city because they do not come to us. The tenants will have three or four or five businesses, let's say, in a strip center. They do not come to us, and all of a sudden, we find we have a violation, and then, and then they've already signed a two- to three, five-year lease. And it's a very problematic situation that I've yet to really address, and the only time we ever hear about it is driving or seeing it or somebody complaining about it. If we had a business license, you'd at least have a mechanism in which they would come in to see what is needed in order for them to do that. That is a justification for that, but that's for a further discussion. But that is what most communities do in order to avoid those non-conforming uses or the life safety issues with respect to businesses.
Well, they also come to us in the real estate companies and say, we need, you know, we need to rent a space. And we're saying, well, what do you need it for? You know, you can't, you can't run a business out of your home unless you qualify, and that's where we send them down here to you. Residential is residential. But yet, there are some things you can run out of your residential home, like you said. But if you're, say, a lot of them are insurance companies, hairdressers, whatever, and they need to be, in my opinion, in a commercial area. But we don't know. If they don't have to get a license, they can go anywhere.
You're pointing out some good thoughts.
Anything else?
President Johnson, just on a final note, this commission asked for the foreign-related persons to be more well-known. We did run an ad in the weekend's paper publicizing the fact that there is a limit on how many people can live in a residential dwelling. So if you didn't see that, it was published. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Not? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?